Well, call our work session October the 4th to order and get started in their business. And the general business tonight would be discussing this emergency operations plan, first off. And that was the county manager.
Thank you. When we sent out the request to talk about items during closed session, for the work session, get my sessions right, for the work session, there were two items that came back. One was the request to review the emergency operations plan, which I believe you, most of you have a printed copy. Commissioner Evans, I think maybe you do everything by computer. So that was one, and there was also discussion about talking about the rescue squad funding. And in recessions previous, we always tried to have a primary and then an additional item in case we got through the first item to talk about. So that's why you have two items on your agenda for this work session. The emergency operations plan, just by size alone, is probably going to take some time. And everyone knows Daniel, he's here, he's tasked with this plan, and he and I have had some discussion about it and talking about the updates and some corrections. And I'm going to think that everyone's had an opportunity to go through it, and if you have any questions or comments or engaging discussion, I think that's why we're here for this first portion. So I would ask Daniel to be here and maybe give a short briefing into how the plan came about, what we do as a result of the plan, and how he utilizes that in his everyday outings.
Fortunately, we don't use it every day. The emergency operations plan comes into effect when we declare a state of emergency. And you know, that plan you've got in your hands is a ream of paper. It's a big plan, it covers a lot of topics. And the plan itself was developed several years before my tenure even came about as emergency management coordinator. At that time, it was something that was funded by the state to help small counties like ours develop a plan. It's hosted online, also paid for by the state. And, you know, it's updated every year, and well, I shouldn't say it's updated every year. It's updated as needed, but it's reviewed annually. It's reviewed annually by myself, it's reviewed every other year by the state. They have a set of things they're looking for in those plans, and it, part of the grant funding that we receive, that I receive every year, is contingent upon that plan meeting their criteria.
They review this whole thing every year?
Every, I review it every year, North Carolina emergency management reviews it every other.
Every other year?
That's correct.
Literally, page by page?
Yes, sir. And, you know, the plan, like many plans, is fairly generic. It's designed to be flexible and moldable to whatever situation we may encounter. So I guess, you know, with that said, I would sort of lean on you guys to ask me questions, or, you know, if there's something I can answer for y'all, or if there's something you'd like to see, I'd be more than happy to entertain that, and we'll certainly have open discussion, try to figure out ways to make it better, and make it still be compliant.
We'll open the floor discussion, any commissioners, questions, comments?
Yes, where's the NIMS? Do you have it? National?
NIMS, National Incident Management System.
Yeah, NIMS. Do you have that plan?
It's a federal plan, I mean, it's...
According to the document that we agreed to on December the 3rd of 2012, there's a copy in the county manager's office, or your office, I've already checked with the county manager's office, they don't have a copy.
Certain there's a copy, and if they're not, then it's, it would be, it's a federal plan, it's not something we develop.
It is a federal plan, but it also, whenever we refer in here, it has information that we're going to.
That's correct, but it's also hosted online.
Right. Now, where is our emergency operations center?
Currently?
Currently.
At the law enforcement center.
How are you going to get 26 people in there?
That's the question I've been asking.
Hey.
Not trying to be smart, but...
And I'm not trying to be smart either, but...
And that's why I've made the push to move it to this room.
This is where we need to have it, but the problem is, we've got to have telephone service in here, we've got to have radio communication service in here, which if we, whenever we come down here to this area, we can put remotes out here, which will work real good. And this, I know you are aware of it, but just in case my fellow commissioners are not aware of it, the authority to activate the EOC is based on your recommendation, but it falls on us, correct?
Correct.
If we operate the EOC, the people that are going to be in the EOC are the county commissioner, chairman of the county commissioner, county manager, town manager, mayor, emergency management coordinator, public information officer, do we have one?
Yep, that's me too.
That you also. Safety liaison, operations director, emergency management coordinator, law enforcement, so the sheriff's department's got to be in there, we've got to have the fire services, hazmat, and fire marshal, rescue, communications, and warning, and it goes on down the list. We even have to have the finance officer in there. Have you checked to see if the, these people that are in here have a emergency operations plan of their own?
I'm sure they don't.
You're right. I wouldn't bet against you, because whenever we get in here and you start looking at these things, we've got checklist, we have forms that are required so that we can get reimbursement for debris management, getting rid of things. It is an extensive checklist, which I believe to really go over this, we've got to, and I'm asking your opinion on this, we need to bring the fire services in, sit down, and see if they are aware of this.
Sure the fire departments are.
And get them to do.
Yeah.
I'll ask one question.
Sure.
The volunteer fire departments have intrinsically safe radios?
Best of my knowledge, no.
Does the sheriff department have intrinsically safe radios? And I'm talking handheld.
Please, sir.
That comes under explosive materials in here. If they go into a area that is making meth, they're using acetone, and OSHA rules require that any radio used in that area be intrinsically safe, which is a special radio that can be used in areas where you have vapors, correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, it also falls in, because we have our volunteer fire departments go to rec sites, if there is a gas tank that is ruptured and there are gasoline vapors around, and it goes up, the first thing that OSHA is going to ask, are they using intrinsically safe radios? My experience from a grain explosion, a grain silo explosion in Wilmington, North Carolina, you don't think about that, but if something like this happens, you know, you're right, it's extensive. This plan is a guide, but it goes right down to the real nitty gritty. There's forms that we have got to have, and oddly enough, whenever you start looking at the areas that they say may be potential hazards, a dam failure, we, all of us here, we can remember whenever the dam broke up here. There is no dams in North Caroli, in Allegheny County now. We've had an earthquake, have guidance in here, but we did not follow it. Pipeline break, we don't have any pipelines here. Severe thunderstorms, October the 24th of this, this year will be the fourth year since we had that wind event in October 23rd. There's checklists in here that would have told us how to prepare. A few things that we've got to look at, and we've got to be ready for, is if we have to evacuate to a site, where's our emergen, where's our shelter?
School systems.
School system, is there windows in that gym?
I think of each one.
Problem that we've got, we designed these buildings needing HVAC systems. If we lose electricity, we have no way of providing ventilation in there.
I have generators and transport switches.
You've got generators, but do we have the hookups for them?
Yes, sir.
Good. What about...
I have one generator, but the building...
Right, one generator, but we don't have a generator for this building, and this is going to turn into the EOC.
That's also part of our problem.
That's part of our problem. Now, I remember whenever we had to evacuate Ted's trailer park a couple of years ago, the first thing you had to do is find a place for him to go, so we took him to the, up on the hill.
Wellness Center.
Wellness Center, but then we had no way of feeding him, we had no food.
That's right.
We have no food, how many cots do we have? If I remember, 64?
They're in a Red Cross trailer that I have access to, and I have about a dozen of my own.
You got about a dozen you own. These are things that whenever they come up, if we have to evacuate to a shelter, such as a catastrophic failure of the electrical system, logical place to take these people are to the volunteer fire departments, but they have no electricity.
Pine Creek does.
Not, they have no electricity to provide water, they will not be able to flush the toilets because they can't get the water, and if it's for an extended period of time, we've got to feed them, we have no food.
We've got a generator at Pine Creek Firehouse.
You've got a generator, which you, that is, that is one, but I bet we've got, we've got to check with the others.
We've got our own well there now, we don't provide off the school, so yeah.
I'm sure Clay Creek has got their own well and Cherry Lane, but I bet they don't have a, a backup generator. Now, here's, I'm speaking from experience of three typhoons on Okinawa, seven hurricanes in Wilmington, North Carolina, one hurricane in Parris Island, and two in Havelock, North Carolina. These are the things we don't think about. Whenever the last hurricane that I went through in Wilmington, North Carolina, we ended up an island. Interstate 40 was one area that we depended on, and one section of that was 20 feet underwater. We found out real quick, because after Fran, we were down without power for a month. Guess what? There was plenty of fuel in the ground, but we had to stop, they stopped transportation in Wilmington, North Carolina, because there was no service stations with generators to get the fuel out of the ground. Last hurricane, we were, we stopped the public, or they stopped the public from eating at Hardee's, because they could not get resupplied, and that was the way they were feeding the National Guard. You've got a plan for worst-case situation, and it's going to involve every facet, if we're going to do this properly, to come in and sit down, and we're going to have to what if, a what if on a shelter. Will we be able to get sheriff's deputies to search people that are coming in to make sure that they're not bringing illegal drugs, or alcohol, or firearms? Biggest problem we had in Wilmington, North Carolina, whenever they opened up the shep, the shelters. Then we've got people that are coming in with health conditions. What do you do with the bodies whenever you have people that die in a shelter? Who's taking care of the pets that they show up with? This plan tells us where it is. The only problem is, if we have a mass, a mass sheltering problem, because we lose electricity and it's going to be off, and I'll give you an example. and I'll give you an example. In 1992, if memory serves me correctly, there was a corneal mass ejection from the sun that hit Quebec. They were out of power for six weeks. It blew every transformer in that Providence. Now you go without electricity in some locations for six months, you've got a real problem because you cannot, you lose your refrigeration. People cannot get food because the grocery stores only keep two and a half days. Corneal mass ejection is real. The county manager and I last week were discussing, and we were watching La Palma. Doesn't mean anything because they didn't put it on the newspaper, excuse me, on the news service in North Carolina, but La Palma is an island, it's a volcanic island in the Canary Islands. There is a section of that island that is a mile and a half wide, nine miles long, that is unstable, and whenever the volcano started erupting, it moved 13 feet. If that section of the island had fallen off, the east coast of North and South America would have experienced a tsunami that the FEMA people reckon, estimated to be 55 feet. It would have gone 50 miles inland, and 65 million is the, is the estimated fatalities. These things are out there, they will happen, they have happened in the past, and they will happen again. Now, in the very beginning, it recommends that we, that we exercise this once a year. When was the last time we exercised the emergency action plan?
I don't know where I'm coming in.
I would, I would, I would take it whenever we did it for the earthquake. But the other thing that comes into the emergency operations center, director of social services, mental health, EMS. They've got to come in, Department of Transportation. I remember whenever we sat here with the earthquake, and Bobby asked the question, and I'd said, I had one of those aha moments. Nobody had checked the bridges. Didn't know if we had bridge damage or not. This is, this has got to be something that we sat down, this is a guide, Daniel's correct, he's looked at it. He's gone over it much more thoroughly than I. But this is something that we, I would recommend that we sit down, form a committee, sit down, bring in the volunteer fire departments, and let's what if? Do you have, on a volunteer fire department, do you have a capability or a generator? Can you bring people in? We've got to make decisions, county commissioners, do we want to stockpile food? Now we have a capability of bringing food in that has a 25-year shelf life, where if something like this does happen, that we can feed the people that we have in a shelter. If we don't have the transfer stations for our main building, we need to get it in. That would be the first step. We could also look on, on the website, the federal website, that they've changed the name on it right now, but there's generators that come up all the time there. Don't, we don't want anything from Marine Corps because it's wore out, please. But, I mean, the Army units, they are getting rid of this equipment all the time. The Marine Corps has lost 40,000 people. Those generators are there. We can pick them up, and we can hodgepodge this. But whenever we look at emergency operations, we've got to look at it, and if we don't, it will happen, and we're going to be short, we're going to be caught with our shortened curly. Is anything I said, do you disagree with?
Only thing I would say is the comment about the dams.
Dams?
We actually do have four high-hazard dams in this county.
You're kidding.
Each of them has its own emergency action plan written for it. Yes, sir.
Okay. I never realized we had four dams.
I didn't either until I started working in this position.
I'll be doggone. I never knew we had three airstrips. Well, we've got Maxwell's, we've got... But I don't think they're active right now.
There's got one last spring that flies out of, and...
Are they practical for our uses? Absolutely not.
Unless they're going to bring in helicopters. The longest one I saw was 960 feet, which would be good for up to a Cessna 182, I would say. And they're grass. But these, I mean, they're there. It worries me at night. Would you recommend, Daniel?
I think you're right. I mean, we do need to sit down with the board and some of the other members that would be responding, so that they're educated on the matter. Now, we mentioned, you know, who's going to be in the EOC. A lot of that's on an as-needed basis.
True.
So you may not have all those people, and a lot of that discretion comes down to me, to make that decision. But the people, everyone that has the potential to be involved in that needs to be aware of their role and that the fact that they may be called on. In regards to stockpiling food and water, and maybe radios or whatever the piece of equipment or commodity might be, I have a lot of authority as the emergency management director to order up resources. Now, it might take a day to get them. I think stockpiling food's a great idea for a day's worth. I don't think you need to stockpile tons and tons because I can order it.
Yeah, I agree.
And a lot of this stuff is in a warehouse in Moxville, North Carolina, so it's not far away. There are a lot of resources that the counties simply cannot afford to maintain and stockpile. And the state does that for us, to a degree. And now if it exceeds that capability, we also have state-to-state mutual aid agreements. That's why, you know, when you have a big hurricane down east, you're going to see swiftwater teams from Florida, New York, Missouri, I think, the last time. A lot of agreements in place to get that equipment and those resources here that we simply cannot afford.
But I would not have known that if we hadn't had this session, other than a conversation with you.
Do you have the ability, I know in 1960, the big snow was coming. I remember.
That was before you were born.
You probably don't remember that at all. I was negative 23 years old.
The thing about it is, they set the National Guard in with, with food packages and stuff, feed cattle and everything. Do you have the ability, you was talking about, I mean, what you could do? Do you have that ability to be able to arrange that or whatever?
I have, and the only person in the county that can request the National Guard, is my understanding, is me.
After we declare...
After you declare a state of emergency. So yes, I do. I am the gatekeeper for a lot of those things, yes.
That's good, because that's what happened back then, and...
Now, there are a lot of resource, I got posed with a question the other day of an incident that happened at Stoll Mountain, and I said, I have no idea if I can get that. I'm not going to get into specifics of it, but I don't know if I can get that or not. But I'll find out, you know.
Here's the thing that I come from, so that you know my background, why I'm asking this. Cherry Point. In January of 1982, we started off, New Year's Day, we had an Alpha accident. Alpha is total loss of the aircraft or death of a crew. We had an Alpha accident every month until I left to go overseas, and I left in June. So that's six airplane accidents that we had. A lot of people don't realize that if these jets, one of these jets go down here, you've got to have a disway facility immediately. And you don't get that. That's State Highway Patrol, they've got to take care of that. But at the same time, if there's fire, you cannot get close to that airplane unless you are totally souped up because of the material that these aircraft are built with. And you could say what you want. We are lucky, I think the last training accident in this training route was a B-52 in the 70s. But it made a big hole, and it makes a big, big thing that you've got to do with, to deal with. If we've got an aircraft that comes over, loses an engine, they punch out, and the aircraft hits the school, we got mass casualties. Can't prepare for everything, but if you have something to start with, and this is what it is, that's well and good, but if we don't keep it up and people are not aware of it, we don't know the assets, that is where we will fail on this. So, you know, I would recommend that as county commissioners, with Daniel leading, start to bring in people in, go over the emergency operations plan, see if we can get some emergency operations plans in the various departments. I've got a question that brings it up. Allegheny Emotion, do they have radios?
Know if they do or not, do they?
Do they have radios in the van? I don't believe they do, and here's the problem that we've got. If we lose electrical power, we will have self, cell, cells, cellphone at the cell sites for 24 hours. That's the only, that's all the fuel that they've got at these cell sites, if they've got a generator. If you lose power, your telephone system goes down because the power is coming off the power grid. You have handheld radios, you've got something going there. Now, the, the tower sites, I believe they've got backup generators for 48 hours.
They're all on propane, so they're...
They're all, well...
And again, then I have the ability to request fuel if they need resupply.
If we can get it up here. Now, Bill and I will tell you, in 1960, you didn't get anything into this county. It was, the drifts were, I mean, down at Paul Evans's store, what was it, Bill? It was 20 or 30 feet tall.
Way up there. Roads were just completely blocked. You couldn't get from Pine Creek to Sparta there for some weeks. You know, I mean, that's something, the snow, we, we know all about snow. But we really need to plan for that, because 93 was on its way of being something similar in 1993, you know.
We had people that froze death in a vehicle, got stuck in a vehicle down at Paul Evans's store. They stuck the road grader in, they couldn't get it out. I mean, it was, it was a mess.
It wasn't just people, it was the cattle that we lost. They finally did bring in helicopters, who brought in coal, brought in some hay, and brought in like potatoes and a few essentials for the people that weren't close to town, but, but it was a rough time.
And that'll hap, that'll happen again sometime.
Yes.
One of these days. It'll come again.
You know, we talk about 19 and 4, 19 and 60. But in 1960, our parents were talking about 1941. 1941, we had a snow event to shut this place down again too. So, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that we seriously look at forming a committee so that we could review the emergency operations plan, bring it up to date, bring these agencies in, and let them know that they need to have an emergency operation plan and start thinking about this so that if this ever happens, we aren't starting off from scratch. And I think the person to lead this is the one that's standing in front of us right now. He's got all the answers, he's got all the knowledge.
Bobby's got a question.
Yes. You said that the state reviews this every two years, you review it every year. But, but I'm just looking at some of these dates. Updated and reviewed, December 2012.
I missed it. It's just a typo. It's a web-hosted plan that I actually cannot edit myself. And so, you know, if I didn't see it, or if I overlooked the date at the beginning, and I, but I read through all the plan, and I didn't send in a revision to the state, then it wouldn't have, then they, it wouldn't have, you know, it wouldn't have been updated there.
The thing that interests people, say, well, you haven't reviewed it since 2012.
And that's on me?
Yeah.
All on that?
And I think the Health Department was 2010. Everybody knows there's been a lot of changes in the Health Department. There is a, there is a section in here for terrorism also. But, you know, I don't know what, what Bob wants to know about it, but there's, there must be 40 different departments, I don't know how many, that are in here. Hazers, material, evacuations. People don't, like John said, people don't think that the county government thinks that far ahead, but that's what your job is.
That's right.
And I think with the, with the earthquake, you did a great job at it. You had a plan to go by, you knew who to call, who to get help from. I hope you never have to use it, but when you do, it's laid out how to use it. And it's more than I can read. I would say there's 400-plus pages. Maybe more.
That's not the only, I mean, there's other plans too, so, I mean, you're right, it is an overwhelming document.
You know, they, each commissioner should have had a copy of this plan. Just like we get this doggone book right here. And, and the department, so that they would know they'd have a checklist and everything of that nature. But there's no need for the county to reproduce it. It's, send it to someone and get it reproduced and pass it out and review. Now Bobby and I are youths, military people. Once a year, we had to go through all our plans. And we had to update it, and we had to sign off on the dag on thing, that it had been updated. He went to the date, I went to the date, because that's the first thing we will go to. So, but, yeah.
Who assures that county government and county employees are fire drills, have active shooter drills? Is that each department head that manages that, or do you oversee the whole thing?
In a roundabout way, I oversee that, but that is sort of a, it's not part of our emergency operations plan. That's, that's part of our emergency action plan, which I just finished also updating. And we'll be blasting out to everyone very soon. But yeah, it's, that plan, declare, it's, it stays in there that I'm responsible for conducting fire drills and maintaining training for those things.
Would just say that this, this plan is available online, you don't have to use paper, it's, you can go... 337 pages, according to this, not, not according to my count. Oh, I, you know, I think, I think having the right people in the right places and, and using training and copy of this and having it on the shelf at home won't, won't do you or anybody any good. But I think the right folks having the, the information and sharing the information together with a group. I'm thinking in my time, I can't go back to 60, but I've heard a lot about it. But I can go to some hurricane come... There you go, Hugo. This is in my... I think every one of those, there was probably different people on the ground doing things you're doing now, and survived them all. Yeah, I know there were some, some of them were really bad. Maybe everybody didn't survive them all, but, you know, we're not going to get out of this statistics are in, it's been done, death is certain. But, you know, coming together with the right folks and having at least guideline for everybody to know all of this stuff all the time. Lord bless them.
I don't even know all this stuff all the time.
But, but thank you for what you do, and I think, you know, you're right. I'm willing to help.
Thank you.
You know, you're right. You, you don't know it all, but you've got something to refer to.
That's right.
I would add to that is, I know there is absolutely no way we can plan for worst-case scenario for everything that we could dream up and think of that could possibly ever happen. All the outside help that we can, because I know there's some of them. Makes sense, let's talk about it. What doesn't, I mean, I think we just have to practical and reasonable with tax dollars as we can in thinking of...
I think that's the key, is to, to plan and try to figure out what can we plan for, but then to also make the best use of the money that we have available. Because we can say, or... Because we can say, or we could try to plan for an asteroid strike, what do you do? I mean, realistically. You know, we, there's another plan that's out there and is being updated right now called the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and that's a consortium of four counties, Ash, Allegheny, Wilkes-Myton, we all sit down, and we try to think about the hazards that are present to us, and these things come up, and they said, well, we can, we realize that could happen, but what will we do? So, we kind of put that one over here somewhere, you know, and we try to actually improve, to plan for and mitigate and to improve the things that we can reasonably control.
Scott.
Couple things. Daniel and I have had a couple discussions and conversations about the plan itself and what it entails, and maybe some thoughts on what could be added, but in a previous role, I also served as the Director of Emergency Services, so I have a decent understanding of how EOPs and how all that happens, and I've actually been a participating member in EOCs when there were events that occurred, so I understand the chaos that could erupt in those situations. When I went through the plan, just as a couple of thoughts. One, you know, the first, and the pages aren't numbered, but the first, I'd say 10 pages of the plan have, you know, basically identifications of, you know, it has positions as an example, and what each position entails, or what, what they have to do with the plan. Now, if you know everyone that is in these positions and you know their contact information, you're good, you know a lot. I never had that benefit. I had to have a separate listing of who from each of those departments and their contact information was, so it was a quick reference. And, and I'm just sitting on one page, and I'm sure everybody here knows it except for me, but number 29 is the County Animal Response Team Coordinator. Well, I can say that's David Spicer because he, he's dealing with animal control, but it, but there's nothing here that tells me how to get a hold of David Spicer. If I, if I didn't know to find David Spicer in my phone, I wouldn't have that ability. And, you know, there's some of these things, you know, 27 is the Amateur Radio Emergency Service, and for me, I have no idea who to contact for that.
Do?
But, but what I'm saying is, that, that's historical knowledge that you've gained.
That's right.
But for anyone else who has to access this plan, they might not know that.
Correct.
So, so having a listing of who fits in, you know, one through whatever the number is, 30 as an example, with their name, the position, their contact information, and, you know, a lot of these, I hope you never have to open this thing, quite honestly, but if you do, you sure want to know who you're calling, and I know that's on you, but for those of us that have a part in it, you know, each, each one of these has branches, and branches add into different things.
Glad to, you brought that up, because you take vacations, do you not?
Not lately.
But if you're, if you're not available, if you're away on vacation or something like that, we've got to have that information, or the county manager will, and if the county manager is not able to get in, the assistant county manager then picks it up, and it gives the chain of command in, in every instance right here, and that's information that we've got to have. You may know it, but, you know, you look to your right, that guy was here one day, and the next day he wasn't, he took all the knowledge with him. And I've been in that position, it, it's a sinking feeling whenever you've got to pick it up. It's, and I'm used to a turnover file. Every staff NCO and officer that was responsible for a area had a turnover file, which all the personal, all the points of contacts with phone numbers, and all the plans that you had to implement and everything else, so that if I disappeared, someone could pick that up and, and go with it right there. That's what I'm used to, and that's what we have to do, because if you can't get in, if we have a snow event, you can't get in, and we operate the EOC, well, if you can't get in, the county manager can't get in, the assistant county manager's going to have to step up. So, it is a chain of command, and the responsibility falls. And no, we cannot, we cannot plan for everything, but if at least we've got a plan, we've got a starting point.
That's right.
All of the other items, and this is just, this is just from past experience, and Daniel and I had a brief discussion about this, but I think, I think the comments opened up with NIMS. That's, that's how we got the ball rolling today, was a, was a comment about NIMS. And there are NIMS, there is, one, two, three, four, five, there's 10 NIMS classes, okay? And it ranges from IS-100 all the way to, at least on this sheet, IS-800. And if you're thinking in your mind, that's not 10, well, they have subcategories is what makes it 10. But each person that is in this identifying sheet has a responsibility, and, and this is just something I printed off, but you as commissioners, you have a responsibility inside this plan. And again, I can only, I can only call from Virginia, and whether that's the social estate as some refer to or not, that is where I operate. In Virginia, your governing body had to be NIMS certified in IS-700 and IS-800. And Daniel and I talked about that a little bit today. I encourage you, I don't know if it's a requirement here.
I've never had anyone call my office to ask if the board had 700 or 800. I'm not saying it's not a requirement, it's just never, no one's ever asked.
Trying to tell us we got homework.
I would think if it were, this training with the School of Government, they're usually pretty good on...
Says on here, it's required.
No comment.
And that's, that's the NIMS website. It says elected officials required. Again, I'm, I'm not saying it is or it isn't. I looked, and I know you're going to smile, I looked for, I Googled, does North Carolina elected officials have an exemption? And I couldn't find anything. But, but what I'm saying, whether it's required or not, you as commissioners have a part in this plan. And to take the introduction to NIMS and to understand how that unfolds, it's something we ought to look at. And if that, in the way that, way that it has been done in, in some of my experiences, it's about a two and a half, three-hour session, if I remember correctly.
It's online, you can do it at your convenience.
And, and what we did was, we put it up on the board, and had, you know, a couple of you come in at a time, you did it, you got your certification, you're done.
I will say now, it's, there's a little quiz at the end...
Yeah.
...that everybody has to take, to get your little fancy certificate, so...
In addition to you as commissioners, I don't think it hurts any individual that is named in a position in that potential to have at least the two classes of introduction. Just don't. And whether we have an official requirement for that to occur or not, it is a best practice, if nothing more, than to have people with a general understanding of what that incident management system entails, as opposed to having individuals who do not. Daniel, I don't know how you feel about that, but that's my thinking.
I would agree. I think it'd be, if nothing else, it'd be beneficial for the board and for those folks that have some role in the EOC, it would give them some understanding of how all this system works and some insight into what it exactly it is that I'm doing when something goes on.
I bet if you called Department of Social Services right now, Lisa Osburn, and you ask her, she has a requirement to come into the EOC, if we activate it, she wouldn't know it. It's a medical examiner. I mean, if we go full-blown...
It's changed so much in the last six months, I honestly don't know.
Got to have a medical, the medical examiner is there. Linda Edwards, does she know that she has a place in the EOC? I mean, she would figure that out. I mean...
I just, I just would like for us, as we're going through this, you know, the idea about having a committee and a, you know, the inner workings of that, I think is great, but I do think that at a governing body level, I think there ought to be some thought about completing at least these two basic courses, and from our staffing level, the same. I think there ought to be a basic understanding of what this entails, so that we can not just go into something blindly. We know at least what the basics of the system is when we go into that plan.
Agreed. We need to follow through with that and know what we're doing, take the, we need to set that up, or everybody do it on their own time, or...
Would you give us the website?
I'll be, I'll send out a link to it, that's not a problem.
Thank you.
Everybody do it on their own time.
And report back to the county manager, we've done it.
Well, I think, I don't live in yesterday, I can only recall from it, but if, when you get your certifications, just send me a copy of them, and we'll put them in the file, and then, you know, if and when it's ever questioned, we can say, oh yeah, we could, they took the basic classes.
Bobby?
Know that when, when commissioners are elected or re-elected, they have so many months to take courses from the School of Government. That's a requirement to stay on as a commissioner. This, to me, would go into our, our plan book on what's required of a commissioner, into our policy manual, and if this board so chooses, I think if, if we want to continue this for new, new people, it should be part of our board policy that within X number of months, you have to go through the training. I'm not saying you have to pass with an A+ or...
Pass fail.
It's pass fail.
But at least we should have to attend that class, and I think that ought, if the board so desires, make that a policy in our policy manual.
Will you make that a motion, and I will second.
We have to wait like a while.
We can bring it to your next agenda.
I do think it ought to be a requirement, I mean, if required to do it, every commissioner coming on board, and I used to, just like the School of Government, they need to do that.
Whenever we were running, getting, or contemplating running, who did we, who of us would have thought that we would have faced an earthquake? That's the thing in my mind, so...
I mean, you read through here all these highlights, I hope none of them ever happened, but we've already had the earthquake in the last 18 months or whatever, a little over a year now, so anything can happen any day, floods and...
We really, we really need to discuss, like Daniel said, the things that is really, we knows are happening up here, and there's always the uncertainties of something else, but we never going to get snow and rains and floods and... Talking about the snow back in 60, there wasn't no four-wheel drive tractors, there wasn't no cabs, there wasn't no four-wheel drive trucks, but looking at today, you're in much better shape, I mean, farmers opening up roads and tractors, you know, and you're in much better shape today to handle the huge snow than we were back then.
We also got to remember the flood in 1916. We can't say that we don't have floods.
We had a great flood here in 1977. Little River was backed up to Trojan Village parking lot.
Really?
All the way up there. I'm just looking here, the evacuation and transportation falls on the chairman of the board. You better get updated.
I will.
Okay.
You better get bigger shoulders, because you got, you got more riding on them now.
Let's discuss our committee here, Daniel needs to be in that, of course, and what do we need? He needs to get the top of that.
So, we need to add this to an agenda item at our next meeting to make it part of board policy.
Yes.
And to establish, I mean, are you going to, you need, are you just going to designate people for your committee?
Whatever you think, we need to put it off till the next go-around, think about it, or do it today, or...
Think you can designate your members.
Committee, committees do we need? Couple commissioners?
I'm a, I'm a two-commissioner kind of guy, that's what I like.
You and Daniel, of course, and John says he'd like to be on it. Any volunteers from other commissioners? I'll ask it that way.
We think it should.
Chairman carries some responsibility, whoever's sitting chairman and one other commissioner.
During the EOC activation, yes, the chairman will carry the load of the board.
So, then Daniel and Michael and John and myself, is there any outside that needs to be?
We would be bringing them, literally, I hope, and start a talking about like, like Director of Social Services, bring her in and say, are you aware, do you have your emergency operation plan? Are you aware that you've got to come into the emergency operations center if we open it up, and things like that? And that way, we can review the checklist and perhaps tell them where they can get a copy of this dag gone thing, and, and they can start going down the checklist.
Should the sheriff be on it?
Those supporting agencies, I think we can accomplish that by just having them come in.
Yeah.
But...
Agree.
So, at least the four of us. John, myself, Michael, Daniel. Anything else you need to do?
Another question, this is just because I don't know, but this is a hosted service, I think you said. If, so if someone outside has the desire to read 376 pages or whatever, was identified up here, they have to have some credentials to be able to log in to do that.
It's considered a sensitive document, to the best of my understanding.
This is a sensitive document.
I mean, to a, to a degree. It's not, you don't just print the paper, you know what I'm saying? But it is password protected.
And the only reason I ask that is, is a lot of the EOPs that I'm familiar with are just a link on the emergency management webpage without having a login or a password or anything.
There certainly may be the capability to do that, I'll ask up the food chain.
To read it?
Yes. It changes, it's just the ability to read it.
It's just right on the website.
Did you, were you able to access it? Okay. Well, there you go.
Because when we talked, there was some weird name I had to log in with and...
Yeah, we have password.
The public, I mean...
It's on, okay, then that's answered.
I was incorrect.
Dang.
I'm afraid to tell you.
Okay. Thing else? Okay. Thing else?
I've wanted this for a little while, haven't you?
Have to do it every year or anything?
I know, but getting down now, you can justify asking for more.
Well, you know, they always say in emergency management, the time to get something is right after a disaster. You strike while the iron's hot.
Put up a date here for us to get started on this.
Not incorrect.
Hazard mitigation plan? Oh yeah, it's a bare of a document, too.
Not the emergency operation plan. I would ask the two commissioners that are going to serve, what's the best date availabilities for them?
October the 15th is out for me.
We get on anything except Mondays.
October 13th, that's a Wednesday midweek, something to look forward to and something to get over. Five hours to it to begin with? Nine o'clock?
Three.
Got a, I mean, were the goal that day just to be talking internally, or do you want to begin bringing in individuals from agencies on that day?
I would recommend that we establish who's going to chair it, how we're going to do it, get the operational side of it down, and then decided on that, start calling people in. How would you like to do it, Dan?
I think we need to have our own internal discussions first.
I'm going to recommend that you be chairman, you're responsible anyway.
Go along with it.
Might as well have a laugh while I'm here. I think so. I think we need to all be together, together alone to talk about those things before we put them on other people.
Organizational meeting on the 13th at 0900.
Okay. Thing else, we...
Sir, you guys...
Say what you do. Rescue squad funding, back in June, we took a consensus of the board to work on better funding for the rescue squads, thinking in terms of what we've done for the fire departments, you know, and help them out to where they don't have to work so hard. That will be an agenda item, of course, when it comes that time. We can't do a rescue tax, right?
Not according to the school of government, that's all I can say.
So, to come up some way out of the agenda or budget.
I know there may be differences of thought, but school of government is one resource. We have our attorney, who also had a similar opinion on establishment of a rescue tax. There's some literature out there that provides for a different path, and I know you're...
I'll put it up, alright.
You're in it, I see what you're doing. All I'm saying is that I can only provide the information that has been provided to me. At this moment, I have to go on the, the rescue tax is not permissible countywide here in Allegheny, not the resource.
I would agree to that, because according to this document, we cannot encumber municipalities. However, the municipality can make a resolution to support the rescue tax and come into it. And I believe that's the impediment that they are talking about whenever they say that the municipalities cannot be included. That's the way that we got the fire tax in. We encumbered the fire tax on everything except the municipality, that was not included until the town of Sparta said that they would support it.
It goes to the wording I used to deliver what I just stated.
To me, that's a legal question for Heather and the school of government.
Both already responded.
That's the answer.
It's out.
Now, it's up to us if we want to put them in the budget for X number of dollars.
I'm going to caution you with one sentence. It is October.
It comes up in next year's budget. And this is early on, but we did take consensus in June to work on this.
I mean, the budget work is done through committee.
Right, it is.
And whenever that committee comes together, I think they should have the support from that consensus that we had. I haven't taken mine back, so, I mean, at this point, if possible, that committee could...
Mr. Chairman, just if I remember correctly, they came in front of the budget committee, they stated what they wanted, budget committee gave it to them, then the next thing you know, they're showing up saying, we ain't got enough money to operate.
Ask for a larger number than what was...
Okay. What they did say, they could operate for two to three more years on the budget that they had and the fund balance that they had. That's why we gave them an increase this year. And I think those people on the finance committee and this board has made it clear that we're going to look at it, this board's going to look at it again when the next budget finance committee gets cranked up.
Remember during the public hearing portion of the budget, there was additional consideration given to the rescue squad at that time?
We gave them.
About 50% funded right now from us. I remember what we gave them, what they asked.
Best was somewhere around...
But if you go back to this short novel that we got, the rescue squad is mentioned in here several, several times, that they are a support agency to a catastrophe in the county. You know, it's a vital, vital function that they perform, but we've just had, I think this year, we've been over backwards with that last bit of money that we gave them, and we've made it clear again that we're going to look at it this coming budget.
We don't want to lose sight of it, you know, and they're at about 50% funded from us at the present time with that add-on that we gave them at the hearing. And they're in the process of building on their building out there, and they're borrowing money to do that. I mean, so they're in the same situation financially as we looked at all the fire departments when you get down to it, you know. Where they want to take a serious look. And I know this is all due to come when the budget cranks up, that's to be, we need to not lose sight of it and try to figure out something to help those folks along their road, too, because it's a vital part of Allegheny County, of course. My short thinking was, we need to look at a percentage that we can say we put in the budget that's going to go directly to the rescue squad if it's, if we decide to fund them, if it's a half a cent or whatever. I'd like to see that stated like that, so they can go year to year and know what they got coming, and they can go to the bank and that helps them out to borrow their money.
I mean, I don't want it out, but that could change every cycle.
Could look at that just like the fire tax, the subject could change, you know, whatever their requests are and their needs and...
Other amount could change every year also, based on the...
I do think we need to step up and try to do more funding for them. We provide a need with our ambulance service. They get called on standby just...
Quite a bit.
Pretty regular, you know, and where it's our world would be, you know. I know it's an expense, big expense, but to me, there's priorities a little bit, too, you know. Trying to help those folks out, I think we really need to, when the budget time comes around, and they'll need our support through the budget process and to take a good look at it somehow if we can, do all we can do.
If I may, one thought that I'd just like to kind of put out there now to think about, for the next few years, our debt service will decline. Maybe some of the reduction on...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, but we're only halfway to the reserve requirements for the state. I'm looking at that debt service to help us meet that goal.
That's the way we are others, and I had some thoughts on that as well, as we come up on the next budget topic. Now, and I don't even know what kind of amount, and won't know until we get to that time of the year, but there's some alter. Debt services comes to mind because of the number...
I agree with John. We all agree upon this. We got to continue to work on our fund balance, because we're not where we want to be, but we're well on our way. We got to continue down there. That's all I have, but the rescue squad, I just don't want to lose sight of it. I think we need to be behind them a little better than what we have been. Anything else?
Back at 6:30? We're back at 6:30?
Six.
Clarify. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Cut a motion in a second.
Read duck.
On favor.